We'll call the meeting to order. Amy, can you call roll, please?
Congressman Campbell.
Here.
Congressman Chambers.
Here.
Congressman Salwell.
Here.
Congressman Yonkers.
Here.
I am here. A motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Motion and support. Discussion or changes? Amy?
Congressman Campbell.
Yes.
Do you hear me, Laura?
Yes.
Congressman Salwell.
Yes.
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 All right. Uh, citizen discussion. Right, it's not on the agenda. Go, go, go. All business. Number four, letter A murders. Michael.
Yep, just, uh, keeping up there. Really no, no changes from the last time we talked. Uh, we did have our audit last week and, um, as I told you at the last meeting, we had about a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars revenues over expenditures after last year that I was hoping we could take seventy-five thousand dollars of it, put towards the upcoming fire truck expense and then the remainder for, uh, the pension. Um, if you recall, I also mentioned that we did receive half of our public, our public safety payroll reimbursement that we requested in August. Um, that money, uh, after talking to the auditor, that money will actually get accrued to this fiscal year, not last fiscal year. So it'll, it'll, it'll actually be counted for as revenue for this upcoming, this fiscal year. So, um, but one of the things the auditor also suggested was there's a possibility if we wanted to maybe take a percent, take a percentage of what walk, like the water and sewer funds payment would be under a normal pension payment and take that money out of the water and sewer funds, um, to, to utilize for, uh, the additional payment. And then you could actually, through your, through your rate methodology, it would, it would also, part of it would be passed on to the township if you wanted to do that. Um, I haven't really delved into that as much yet to, to figure out if that's really what I want to do, what I would recommend. But, uh, he did, he did mention that. So-
What does that look financially by doing?
Like I said, I, I haven't really delved into the water and sewer. I know we're in good standing on those, but I'm a little nervous because it's almost like robbing Peter to pay Paul. So that's, I'm a little, I'm a little nervous about this. So I, I want to do a little more research on that. Um, and that's really where we stand right now.
All right. Any questions for Mike on the update? All right. Uh, letter B, showboat. Mike again.
So, um, I didn't put a memo together on this. It was more of a discussion topic. But in your packets, I gave you a couple of different scenarios. And what we, what we did was we tried, I did enough, I did kind of like two things. The first thing I did was I, I did a research on a number of municipalities that had event-type centers. Um, I researched, uh, City Grand Rapids with Van Andel and DeVos. Um, I, I, uh, researched McMoran Event Center in Port Huron, um, the, uh, the Fenton Community Center, uh, also the, um, Terrace Square in Hudsonville. And now I understand they're totally different types of facilities, totally different, but when it comes down to how they operate, I felt that they were all relatively similar, um, in a, in a sense, even though they're different, they're different types of things. I mean, you're, but, so I, I did, I did a lot of research on it because I didn't really know how we wanted to consider, what we would want to consider operating this once it does become open. And so, um, I could, I could tell you that, um, then the other thing we did was the Chamber came up initially with two rental scenarios and, and expense, and expense scenarios. And what they did was if you look under spreadsheets, if you look at scenario one and scenario three on both, on both of the, uh, I gave you two different spreadsheets. Um, if you look at scenario one and scenario three, those were the scenarios that the Chamber gave me with rental, with rental, uh, with rental fees. And they researched rental rates of a number of different rental, rental facilities. Terrace Square being one of them. I believe they used a, a barn out in, um, building. Uh, they used John Ball Lou, there's another place in Grand Rapids, as their, as their comparable. And then they also gave me a list of monthly expenses. And so when they gave their expenses, I know we, we were a little concerned at, at first, their utility, their utility cost seemed relatively low. And so through Steve's help, he helped me, um, come up with a better scenario for at least the electric usage. And then I took what the meter size they would be, what they would be recommended to have for water and sewer. And then, um, we basically compared a building that we already paid for. I, I, I compared it to the library, what we pay for gas costs because I, I think relatively size-wise, they're probably the closest for, for, um, for comparative purposes. So realizing they're probably a relatively conservative number. And then one of the other issues that were in the scenarios expense-wise that I haven't even accounted for yet is whether or not if we bring somebody in full-time or part-time. Uh, I'll get into that in a minute. But one of the other issues that came about that Steve, Steve and I talked about was depreciation and re, and capital reinvestment. This is a three-point-four million dollar asset. So in theory, it depreciates at about sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. Now, you could argue that you never, so in theory, you should probably be putting that amount in, in reserve for future capital expenses as you, as you go about. Now, understand one thing. A lot of times that depreciation cost would be if you were to replace the whole thing, you know, fifty years from now. And we, we used a fifty-year model. That's probably not the intent here, but the fact of the matter is you still need to be putting aside a, a pretty healthy chunk of money every year so you can, so you have, so you have the money. So when you do need to do these capital improvements five, ten years down the road, you have it. You're not seeking debt to pay for it. So, um, I took that into the, the different scenarios. And then what I did with all the scenarios, I, I did two, I did two models, but I ran five scenarios. And each scenario was twenty-five percent higher, uh, increase in rental revenue based off of the original scenario that the Chamber provided me. And then obviously I kept the one for the one, for the one that was fifty percent, which was scenario feet three. But I went up to double, I even went up and just looked at what the double, double the original amount that was, that was proposed by, by the, by the Chamber for, for rental, for rentals, uh, amount. And if you look at the one where we are doing a full reinvestment of the depreciation costs, this, these don't make any money. Um, the only scenarios that do are the scenarios, well, the fourth and fifth scenario. But then the question comes about is can the market even, can the market even sustain those rental rates for the facility? And there's still even question as to whether or not some of these rental options are even options. But for all, all intents and purposes, we, we looked at it. And so I came up with another model and, um, I pulled up another model where we basically did the same revenue and expenses for all of them. The only difference was we just put, we would put thirty thousand dollars a year in rather than sixty-eight thousand dollars a year. And if you look, the first, the first option doesn't even, doesn't even net revenue. And the second scenario, only net income's about forty-four hundred dollars. So in talking with some of the other communities, um, I was wonder, I wanted to know whether or not any of those facilities made money. And I could tell you that with the exception of the Van Andel Arena and, and, um, DeVos Place, none of them make money. In fact, I know the city of Hudsonville subsidizes about fifteen thousand dollars from their general fund annually, basically to net the, net the, net the, net the cost at zero. So there's no, so there's no deficit. Um, I know City of Muskegon, LC Walker doesn't make money, even with, they just got that large, um, amount of money from Mercy Health for the naming rights. They, and their view on that sit, situation is that they believe that while the LC doesn't make money, the businesses around them do. So that they justify that as, as, as an option, you know, the reason to do it. And, um, and that, that is the case. And that's also the case of Port Huron with their, with their facility. They, they believe the same thing. They believe the same thing is, is the case there. And in Fenton, I can just flat, I'll tell you from experience, I would never consider that model at all, quite frankly, as a dumpster fire. You don't want it. Um, so, um, the, uh, so that brought, that brought me my first question is, is, okay, are we, are we, are we making money? And the second question I, I, I had to ask myself was how, who's going to run this? Um, the obvious, Grand, or, or Grand Rapids, they, the, the Stadium Authority contracts with a, with an events firm that handles all the operational aspects of their facilities. And they get paid a stipend based on, on the events. And all money goes through the authority, like all, when, when they pay for the events, all the vendors, everything goes through the authority and then it's paid out to the, like the stipend is paid out to the, uh, uh, to the, to the management firm. But they, they do, but they, everything comes through, through them first. Um, the same goal, well, Port Huron had that situation. They had a contract actually with the same firm. Their situation, it didn't, it didn't work for them. So they ended up bringing back the management in-house. Hudsonville brought it in-house. Um, Hudsonville brought it in-house.
What's the place in Hudsonville?
Terrace Square.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Hudsonville brought it back in-house. And one of the things they told me, and actually a number of them did, is their belief was you had to have, you had to dedicate somebody full-time to that facility because it's really in itself is a full-time job. Now, in, in our scenarios, we have this basically being a part-time position, whether or not we, we do it or the Chamber were to do it. At this point, they have it as a, as a part-time position. I don't know the answer to that. All I can go by is by what other communities have told me, their situation. I know Muskegon said the same thing to me, that they believe that they had to dedicate somebody full-time to that facility, which they did. It's a city employee. And the same for, um, uh, Port Huron. They eventually got rid of the, the event, uh, mark, the event firm and they brought it in-house. Like I said, none of them are making money, but they're also not, but they're also, they're also coming, you know, they're also coming closer to, to breaking even probably than if you would have had an event firm come in as well. So, and then in Fenton, you don't want to, I, I think the problem there is, the problem with that facility was it was, it's a city-owned facility, but it's managed privately. And in that scenario, the city has no, the city owns the building, but they have no say on anything. And there've been a number of situations where they've had financial issues in that facility and management issues too, quite, quite honestly, that the city never was able to truly get control of it. And it became, unfortunately, in that situation, it became more of a, um, the Board of Governors who oversee that facility was deemed more as a social club than anything else. And you don't want that here, which is why I say that it's a really bad situation. Um, so that leads me to, I've done this initial research. I guess my, my question for the council is, you know, and maybe we need more information, more time to talk about it. What do we, what do we, what do you want to do regarding the operation of this facility? Would you like the Chamber to, to run it, understanding all of these possibilities? Now, we could be all wrong and it could make money and, and that's great. But we don't, we don't, we don't know if that's the case. Or would we want to, um, have a, you know, dedicate an employee of the city to this and oversee it? And you may or may not want to, want to do that. But I, I guess I'm at that point as to where do we want to go when we start planning this?
It's a little difficult to assume anything without anybody from the showboat committee here to-
Yeah, I thought Liz-
-ask the questions.
Yeah, I thought Liz was going to be here.
Also, the LC Walker and Van Andel are not repairables because they're huge crowds. The maintenance on a single sheet of ice is extensive and they have revenue coming in from a league that they play in. And they have a ton of huge, huge sponsors that they do choose. We're not going to have Meyer and Hamway and whoever else is down at Van Andel.
Right. And like I said, you're, you're making apple and oranges comparisons, obviously. And it's, I look, I was looking at the structure of operation.
Yeah. And, and, and the way that's going this year down at the Van Andel and, and the arena, they, they are going to be having to make up that cost that they lost this year. They, they are just in a, right now, they're going to be about ninety percent.
Yeah.
Because they had a good start of the year, but nothing since.
Right. And they have no contingency plans, right? So now, two of them got canceled. So they're asking for money because they didn't have a contingency plan to get through a bad year.
Yep.
This is without a contingency plan too. You're already losing money and you're not putting anything aside for a cold winter or a terribly hot summer where the revenue's going to be down. Or a pandemic. This is a good example. So I think without the showboat committee here to ask questions and without a bunch of variables, it's a impossible question to answer tonight.
Sure.
This is fantastic information, but-
At least it's something-
Yeah.
-to look at.
Right.
And it'll make us more prepared for when-
To work from.
Yeah.
So, Perry Beecham, um, is this going to be an asset of the city? So are you going, so, because when you're looking at different possibilities and different groups, are you changing your ordinance about alcohol on, uh, city property? I mean, I just, I, I, people that are going to have possibly weddings or receptions or different things are certainly going to, I, there'll be some that are going to want to have, be able to serve alcohol in that building, in that facility. And currently, I don't know if at one time they're talking about being part of the parks, different thing. I mean, you have an ordinance right now that there's no alcohol in any city facilities.
I, I guess, I don't know how that would be the case because we do allow alcohol for the summer concerts.
That's under Gilmore's, they get a special-
Special use permit, right?
Yeah.
An extension, right?
It's-
Like our control area, right?
But it's still on our property.
Right. I'm, I'm just saying the, the licensing and the, they pay the state for the ability to sell beer and wine on the boat.
It is a good question. I, I-
I didn't think of that.
I don't think the city wants to get into the liquor license business, I'll tell you that. But Perry's right. You're not going to be able to, and you're going to lose seventy-five percent of your events if you say water and alcohol.
Well, yeah, you're, you're going to probably have to look at that.
So that's a good question for the meeting.
I was under the impression, because we already did it for the showboat, that-
Oh, Gilmore does that for us as a service.
It's an in, interesting question as someone who's had multiple family events in the Chamber building where we brought beer and wine. I never even thought of it.
And you think about it that way too. I mean, that is technically a building we own.
Well, that's why I said, when he mentioned it, I went, oh, oh.
Right.
I've done that.
Well, I think before Mike came here, because they were, because it was, is it leased to the Chamber? It was something, again, as compared to how they were skirting the issue, um, that you could have alcohol there, but you couldn't have, you know, low light power. You know, if we wanted to have a Christmas event or a holiday event and you, and, you know, you wanted to have wine and beer or whatever, we had, you know, there was no, um, city facility that, except for the Chamber, that would allow you to have alcohol. So I, again, I'm just, I'm just not one way or the other. I'm just throwing that out. I think if you're looking at revenues and everything, I think that is, if you don't allow that, that's going to-
Well, it's a great point.
Yeah. Oh, I agree. You, you have to, you, you have, you will, you will diminish your customer base if you don't consider it.
So could we pass a resolution twenty-four dash sixteen that says alcohol can be served on the-
Yeah, let me-
I'd like to see what happens.
Let me look at your ordinance a little bit. Yeah, let me look into that a little bit more. Um, something I'm just, that's just popping into my head, as you're seeing now, especially with COVID, uh, you're seeing a number of downtown districts, they're, um, they're utilizing the public space of the downtown to allow alcohol. That's becoming more and more common. Grand Rapids is one. I know Muskegon's another one that's doing it.
But as I understand it, it's an extension of the existing businesses, existing liquor license and liability.
Yeah, it, it very well may be.
Renting the space, but you're not covering the insurance for the liability or licensing of liquor.
So one of the other things too, that we could, that we would consider is if you were to allow alcohol, and I don't know how this would work, but we would, we would mandate that it would be a local business that they have to get their alcohol from, whether it's New Union, whether it's Larkins, whether it's, it's the barbecue, um, Flat River, um, Big Boiler. Doesn't really, I would, I would probably want to open it to all of the, all of the businesses in the city that have liquor licenses. And maybe it falls under their license if they're allowed to do that. I don't know the answer, but it's something to look into.
I would think whoever you're, a lot of times whoever you're catering, you know, some, if you're, I, I'm just thinking like a wedding or a fun, or, or a rotary having an event there or whatever, you're going to, you're going to cater it if you're, if, if, um, and the possibility exists that you might not be using a, a, rotary probably would, but a private individual that's having their wedding there, they're probably going to go to a, um, outside service, um, that does catering, that does, has the, um, liquor availability and that type of thing. That's, I don't know that for a fact. I'm just talking out loud.
Susan Stevens, Executive Representative. Um, I have planned events where we've used a facility that does not have alcohol on site. And we brought in our own, we hired a bartender service. And you do, you can do it through Gilmore and other restaurants. You can hire, if they're catering it, you can hire their bartender to come serve. And it falls, you buy the alcohol from them, you, it falls under their liquor license. So if you put in there, now, my understanding is they're also talking about family reunions renting this out. My family reunion, we all show up with coolers.
Yeah.
Um, you know, yeah, that'd be great, but is that allowed? Some hotels allow that, some hotels don't. You know, we've always had to kind of figure out where we can go and ask the questions. We're going to bring our own food. We're going to bring our own coolers, a pool of whatever.
The discussion I've been having with the Chamber right now to this point has been food they can get from wherever. We weren't going to regulate that, but the alcohol had to come from, from a business in the city that, that, and, and that was the option.
And if you hire their bartender and it's their liquor license-
If it's a smaller wedding though, and you're talking fifteen to a hundred people and they can't afford it, they're just going to go to Costco and they're going to get a gallon of vodka to basically, that's what you do.
Well, I mean, you could-
And I don't know if it's different-
You could make that, you know, and that's something you could consider, but I mean, that's something you could put in the stomach at the, at the beginning and there's no outside alcohol.
These are both serious-
Questions we need to answer. You're already talking about barely making money at all. The last thing you want to do is limit a bunch of customers. Perry was right.
Well, Mike, if you could check too what our liability would be for that.
That's a very good question as well.
And see if it differs. I know some places, it differs open bar to actually selling, right? So these are all questions that are really good.
Well, can you have alcohol at Terrace Square?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
I've heard, yeah.
Their arrangement at Terrace Square, I know for a fact is-
In Hudsonville?
Yeah. I was at one.
That's why I mentioned it.
It's the old, you can get liquor in Zeland now too, far enough west.
Yeah, it's, um, they have an agreement, they have an agreement with, um, the local businesses in Hudson, the local bars in Hudsonville. You can only get the alcohol from them. I know that for a fact.
Anyways, I think the best thing to do would be to showboat board and have a public meeting so citizens can come. Because there's a lot of misconceptions out there too from everyday residents about who's man for what, how, why. I think it'd just be the best thing to do would be to get it all out in the open. And you can't, I can't ask Liz or Mark Munn or anybody questions because they're not here. So I knew, I thought Liz was going to be there. But I think this model is fantastic. I appreciate you said that.
I know Thursday they'll be at a meeting at six o'clock at, uh, Chamber. It's a fundraiser thing. But if you have any questions regarding that with alcohol, you could bring it up.
Gilda's, right? Uh, Gilda's Dinner or whatever?
No, it's a showboat fundraising committee meeting.
They're on it.
I think I'd much rather just have them here.
Yeah.
By the way, the public's out here.
Yeah.
All in one room.
Yep.
We'll get with Liz and figure all that out. Anybody have any other questions for Mike? Thanks Perry, thanks Stu.
Good question.
Uh, new business, item A, Mole easement. Steve?
Good evening. Uh, last month, the Light and Power Board, uh, approved and is recommending, uh, an easement agreement with Samantha Mole, now known as Samantha Norman, Norman. Samantha lives at thirty-one twenty, Pratt Lake. And the easement would allow Low Light Power to install a transformer and an underground conduit, uh, and cable on her property, which would allow us to underground her neighbor's, uh, electric infrastructure. Uh, probably the simplest, uh, easiest easement we've had that only affects two customers and pretty straightforward, um, Light Power Board's recommendation to approve the utility easement agreement in your packet. And it's, uh, the same form that we've used for many recent agreements.
Questions for Steve or Perry? Motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash twenty for the easement.
So moved.
Support?
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Close. Amy?
Amy, Laura?
Yes.
Congressman Salwell?
Yes.
Congressman Yonkers?
Yes.
Congressman Chamber?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Uh, CARES agreement update. Michael?
Yep. As part of the, uh, hundred and twenty-two million dollars Kent County received through the CARES Act, fifteen million dollars of that was allocated by the Kent County Board of Commissioners to local government entities in Kent County. Of that amount, a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fourteen cents being allocated to the City of Lowell for the allotment. I've confirmed with Kent County the funds must be used by no later than November fifteenth, twenty-twenty. And if any funds are still in our possession and are unused, the city is required to return them. I have also attached the agreement the city must approve in order to accept the funds. When we were notified of the CARES Act funds, not much direction was given to the funds as to how they could be utilized. Since then, I have confirmed in writing, the county would allow us to reimburse payroll expenses for our police officers, similar to what the city requested from the state of Michigan through the Public Safety and Public Health Payroll Reimbursement Program. Kent County stated, we could do this as long as we didn't require, file a request for reimbursement for the months we had already applied for. My projection is this amount would equate to approximately three months of payroll expenses for our police department, for our police officers in our police department. If you were to approve this agreement, my plan would be to submit for reimbursement for the July, August, and September police payroll periods for their expenses. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council approve the grant agreement from Kent County to receive the allotment of a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, fourteen cents in CARES Act funding and utilize the funds for police payroll reimbursement as presented.
Any questions on that? Do we have a plan for the hundred and thirty that we're saving on the police budget?
Well, um, sure. Kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah. I was hoping that.
I was thinking that and then the others, the other half of the amount for the firetruck. Because as of right now, you know, as I told you at the last meeting, we are having higher projections in our sales tax and our, and our pilot. And we're also, um, you know, we're also receiving this and we've, that forty-six thousand dollars I just mentioned to you. So the, the plan, my plan would ultimately be make sure we set money aside for the firetruck purchase that will be next in twenty- fire truck purchase that will be next in twenty, beginning of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, well, that's what Shannon told me.
Yeah, wow.
And, uh, and so we have the money ready to go and then we can make a, you know, we can make a contribution of hers in addition to our.
But you bring that back for a separate recommendation, right?
Absolutely.
After the money's freedom.
Yeah, 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 I'm not doing that right now.
Taking county's money and covering some payroll.
Correct.
Any other questions for Mike?
Yeah, the, the fire truck, our portion of it is what, seventy-five thousand, right?
Actually, our portion of, after the county, the county is gonna pay for two hundred thousand dollars of the truck. It's projected around, it's projected around six hundred and fifty thousand total for the whole truck. So of the, of the six fifty, the, the amount outstanding is four hundred and fifty thousand, divided by three would be a hundred and fifty. Now, the fire department is trying to seek some additional funding, which would then reduce our cost. I'm just preparing for the worst case scenario that they don't get that funding and then we just have our funds available.
And we do have some, I'll cover it in my board report, but we do have some overages in other funds too. So it's not, we have a pretty good nest egg and then we also have an equipment fund as a board. So that is absolute worst case scenario, but that's a whole, whole nother thing. That's on hold right now anyway, so. Uh, any other questions for Mike? Motion to approve using CARES funding for police payroll, amount of a hundred and thirty thousand, five twenty-nine and fourteen cents.
So moved.
I'll support motion and a second. Any other discussion? Amy, to approve the CARES.
Who was the motion?
Greg.
Greg and Marty.
Councilmember Salvedo?
Yes.
Councilmember Yenick?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cornfield?
Yes.
Yes, thanks Mike. Boarding Commission reports clear.
Nothing.
Jim?
I have nothing.
Greg?
Uh, no meeting reports. The Trails Group, we did, the city withdrew their request as we've had through the previous couple of years, but we are on the schedule for twenty twenty-three construction. We're real close on everything.
Marty?
I have nothing other than I understand that Light Power had special meeting Wednesday, right?
No, Tuesday.
Tuesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
And it, I'm assuming it went well?
Yes.
Good. Did you buy the boys the new toy they were playing with down at the fairgrounds?
The board did approve a service truck, yeah.
That's a, that's a, it's a cool truck, cause it's a, it's a hybrid. So it's really, it should do really good. And it's very new and they give it a look. You're gonna get rid of the old one, right?
Correct.
Yep. That's it?
Yep, all right. Fire Authority, two meetings since we were here last, well, since I was here last. Uh, Ron Van Overbeek retired. We had a nice little retirement party for him, Fred's family and me. And then we appointed Shannon Witherell as interim chief. We had a special meeting after that to formulate a new chief job description, deciding what direction we're gonna take. So once that's done, I'll bring it back to you. The county truck process is put on hold. The county fire board will not engage in any design or bidding process with any department with a vacancy or interim chief. So it's, I don't think it's gonna put us that far behind. I just think it'll be a scramble once we, and then daytime coverage is a concern too. So we're expediting as quickly as we can, trying to find the right person to take over the chief spot permanently. We've moved our meetings from the second, Monday at three-thirty in the afternoon to the second Thursday at seven PM to accommodate better members of the public or members of the department wanting to come to these meetings and bring a little bit more visibility to what those guys are doing down there.
That's what, Amy?
Yeah, thir, this Thursday at seven. Uh, we did a, we did hire a new attorney. His name is written down at my house. So he'll be there Thursday to introduce himself.
Sounds like a good name.
Uh, we, uh, originally we're going to use either the township or Jessica as an attorney for the authority. The vote seemed like it'd be better without a, with an attorney with no vested interest in any municipality, but it would be the fair way to get. Uh, and it's comparable rates to what we were all paying anyway. So it was kind of a no-brainer. What else did we talk about? I think that's it. So we'll meet again on Thursday and I'll be back in two Mondays with hopefully at least an idea of the timeline. Michael?
Hello?
Yeah, City Manager.
Well, just a couple of items. Uh, first off, I did have the opportunity to sit in on both interviews for the two finalists for the general manager position. They, the, the board, they, they made an offer to an individual by the name of Charlie West from Paris, Tennessee. Um, I had the opportunity to sit through his interview. I was very impressed with him. He came across very knowledgeable and enthusiastic about public power. And I think he will, I think he will be a good fit. Both candidates were very good, don't get me wrong, but I, at the end of the day, it was obvious to me and the board that that was the right individual to, to select. So from what I understand, they're beginning their negotiations and hopefully he'll be on board soon. So looking forward to that. Friday, the Michigan Supreme Court, um, they, they rescinded Governor Whitmer's executive orders. And as confusing as the executive orders were, the rescission now is, is just as bad. We're getting conflicting information as to whether or not we can actually not follow the orders now, whether we can follow the orders now, whether or not masks are, are legal or not. I, I don't know the answer. The other, you know, the other issue is, is obviously with Open Meetings Act, we were doing virtual meetings. We were allowed to. Now, the question is, is whether or not you can still do them. I did, I do believe there was a bill that was presented in the House today pertaining to that. I don't, obviously it's gotta go through the Senate and then off, off to the governor's desk. And, but that being said, even before the exec, before the, the executive orders were rescinded, it looked like we could possibly start meeting indoors in person again, which I think we can, but I don't know the, but I don't, I don't know the answers to that.
Can I, part of the bill eliminates the actual council and city employees from the capacity.
Correct. That was part of the issue. So under the old executive order, under the executive orders, we were not included in that count. So, but now that the, the executive orders are invalid, it's, there's no, there's no guidance as to what you can and cannot do. So the question is, is whether or not, you know, for communities that are still doing meetings on Zoom, whether you can even do it anymore, cause the executive orders have been rescinded. The other issue is water shut offs. Under governor's executive orders, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't shut water off. Well, now, there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no clear direction as to whether you can or you cannot. Not saying we probably, you know, it's a wise idea, but I know in our instance, we, we do have some situations where some people, they're not paying and when we try to reach out to them to set up a payment plan, they don't respond. So that creates an issue as well. So I really don't, I'm hoping in the next couple of days, we start getting some more guidance as to what we can and can't do. Cause I mean, I literally spent three hours trying to figure this out and it's.
I thought we didn't have much of an issue with the water. Isn't that why we voted to just kind of?
We, we don't have an issue, a major issue. It's, it's actually a very fractional amount of people that this is an issue, but they're not, they're not, you know, they're not paying. And, and it's, I mean, it's a very small amount. It might only be like eight people, eight accounts, but it's still an issue and.
Well, the longer it goes unchecked, the longer, the higher those balances get, the more of an issue it'll become to catch up.
Right.
Mike?
Yep.
Can you, um, so we changed at Light and Power, we changed our policy. If you're a homeowner, we, we refunded all deposits and we don't require a deposit of a homeowner, um, because we can now, we can lean their property if they, you know, failure in pay. We do require deposits of renters. So I don't know what you're talking about and my question would be, can you, for those that are homeowners that are not paying their bill, can you, I guess that'd be a question for Dick.
We'd do that.
Okay. So you, eventually you're gonna, you get your money.
Yeah. And I believe you can even seek it through, when we do, when we have unpaid taxes through the county, the county reimburses us. I believe they will reimburse us for that as well.
To a certain, to a certain point. And it's a hassle to process all that. The only recourse we have with taxes is if people are serving on boards or commissions or council or. Cut. Cut.
From my understanding that the last I saw, there were two counties, Oakland and Ingham, that took their health departments, said, we're continuing with the mask mandate and Kent County is considering it or?
So I did talk to the city attorney about that today and the issue with those now is whether those will be now be legally challenged, because there might be a legal argument that that's not even valid. So like I said, it, this is clear as mud right now.
Okay.
I, I participated in a webinar, now I'm with Dickinson, right, today with Miller Johnson, just because I'm on one of their listservs. And their legal counsel did state that any executive order related to COVID since, I believe April thirtieth, is invalid. However, the Department of Health and Human Services and DHHS and MIOSHA do have directors with certain emergency powers. And DHHS took the language that was written in most of these executive orders and used that same language for like PPE and masks and social distancing requirements, capacities in buildings and had that, the DHHS language. So a lot of these mask mandates, social distancing, capacity laws are still in effect through just a different governmental entity, not the executive order. So anyway, for what it's worth.
Yeah, was that what you said tonight?
Yeah. Okay.
So that's all I have.
Good luck sorting that out. Uh, appointments, the only, we're thinking, the only, I did get ahold of Parrot Waitman maybe, and he will continue on the DDA. Mike Springer's not up for an appointment. Uh, I think Greg and I talked about it. He wants to continue on the DDA. There is spots for at-large, non-downtown business owners on the DDA board. It does state, I think in the language, vested interest in the city or something like that.
So, yeah, you have to have.
But the at-large bids are.
The at-large bids can be whoever you want. The majority, the majority has to have a interest in the downtown district, whether they own property or work for an organization that's in the business.
But I think as far as an at-large bid, you're not gonna get much better than Mike Springer. The guy is more than a vested interest in this community and he's proven that for, I don't know how many.
Twenty-five years.
Yeah, so. Uh, if everybody's okay with those two things, that's what I will continue to do. Good. Uh, council comments, Cliff?
I would just like to encourage people, we had a, a small turnout at Coffee with Counsel, but there was a gentleman that brought some legitimate concerns and he even admitted that he should have come to us sooner with it. And I just want to encourage people to reach out to us if you have a concern about the city or something pertaining to the city. If we don't know, we don't know. So please come to one of these meetings or Coffee with Counsel. It's a lot more casual. Let us know what's on your mind.
Thank you. Jim?
Yeah, I made the coffee and everybody survived, so.
I didn't drink it.
I did, I, I drank plenty, but I, I survived, so. Yeah, but, but Cliff was right, small crowd, but it was, it was still good conversation.
Yeah.
That, that's it.
Cliff, great.
I missed Coffee with the Counsel. I was in the upper peninsula enjoying the fall colors, but nothing.
Cool, Marty?
First, uh.
Upper peninsula.
Jim, thank you for doing coffee for me. Uh, I had a Plan A, but I thought Plan B would be a better choice.
It was.
Thank you.
Your Plan A was terrible. I don't know why you would have ever asked me to.
Second, I'd like to thank everybody for the Pink Arrow Drive-In to help. Greg took time out of his very busy schedule to, to help Park. And I thank you very much for that. That was loving beyond. Mr. Mayor, I made you stand up and give a speech and I do believe you forgot half of it, but that's okay. Lots of room.
You got the last half, so that's the least important, Park.
And I thank you for that. The other thing is, is chief, your officers that were there that night were amazing. They interacted with the community, showing little kids the car, how the lights were, giving stickers. People were just so impressive. They had so many good people come up and say, that's what good police departments are. They, they interact with their communities. And you've got a wonderful bunch of people over there. The guys from the fire department that served in AMT, who were they?
Uh, Eric Telly and Ashley Putney.
Yeah, I'd like to thank them too. Uh, every time we scored or we did something good, they hit the lights on the truck and all the little kids quit looking at the screen. Ooh! So it was a lot of fun. Well-attended event. I took last week off, so, well, I just got back today. I too was up north, but it, it was exciting to see the community come together for such a good cause. And now we're actually gonna still, I believe, help somewhere about ninety-five to a hundred families this year. So that's a good, that's a good thing to have in our community, so. That's it?
Good. All right, here's my list. Community cleanup was last Saturday. Fantastic weather. For a community cleanup, pretty low attendance overall. I thought it was, it was steady, but it wasn't back up into Hudson traffic. I think a lot of people have been cooped up for a lot of months doing these projects on their own. I already got rid, uh, but Liz, Liz does a really good job with that and everybody was down there to help. Uh, Greg was down there with me. Uh, the Pink Arrow Drive-In Theater, uh, you're hearing a lot about Perry and Teresa, rightfully so, and all the stuff they do for Pink Arrow. And you're hearing a lot about the sponsors, but you're not hearing a lot about Marty Chambers. That thing doesn't go anywhere without Marty Chambers. And he won't take credit for it, so I'll give him credit for it. Last minute changes, things falling apart, uh, variables, intangibles. He rolled with every single punch. He did something for the community. Uh, he kept a tradition going. I think he started a new tradition, quite honestly, because it went over huge. And now he has other communities coming to him and asking him how he pulled it off.
Yep.
So give the guy some credit. It's well deserved. It was a fantastic event. Obviously, credit to you and Teresa every single time.
You're, you're absolutely right. Marty had talked about, or can you make it happen? And under his direction, yeah, we did a few little things, but it was under his direction that made it happen.
Yeah, a hundred percent. And Dave Vane Toole, and the tech guy, took hundreds of thousands of dollars of other people's equipment. And, uh, the stream was fantastic, the audio was fantastic, the picture was fantastic. The crowd was amazing. The dads out throwing footballs with their kids in the park and that's really what, that's really what a city park should be used for, something like that. I was very, very impressed. The police are obviously a fantastic asset of the city. I couldn't find a bad thing to say about them if I had to. The fire department guys, Shannon got me on very, very short notice. And it wasn't just those two. There was a huge volunteer list of people who wanted to do it just to help out. So it's a really, really good example of what happens around here when we try to do something. Marty and I went on WION radio last Monday.